Councilmember Faroki.
Yeah, thank you, Council President Shipman. I'd like to pull up a paper of mine that's been sitting in FEC for a couple of cycles, 24-0, 1474 is item 10 of the FEC agenda. Page 44 of the whole council agenda. This is a paper that was introduced roughly a month plus ago to execute the procurement award for PAD to move forward two years of operational funding. It was held at committee with the expectation that the administration was going to offer, at their request, and offer some alternative approach. That has not yielded any progress, and so I think it's appropriate at this point for us to move it forward. If the administration wants to do something with it on its own after we pass it, it's within their purview, but I think that it's appropriate for us to move this paper forward. I will move to do so, and I appreciate your second. Yeah.
So, per code, any council member can pull up a paper they've authored off of held after two or more cycles of it being held in committee. That's what Councilmember Faroki has done. Councilmember Faroki has moved adoption of 24-0-1474. Councilmember Lewis has seconded the motion to adopt. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this? Oh, yes, someone needs to read the caption. Councilmember Shook, would you like to?
Thank you. 24-0-1474 is an ordinance by Mr. Faroki, authorizing mayor or as designated, execute the procurement agreement for the RFP indicated, mobile community referrals and diversion services on behalf of the City of Atlanta pursuant to the code section indicated here, with the policing alternatives and diversion initiative retroactively effective from July 1 of 2024 for a term of two years and with two two-year renewal options in an amount not to exceed $5 million for the first two-year term. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the accounts listed.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt this item? Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support the legislation, but I believe the administration wanted to speak to the paper, so I'd like to make a motion to go into committee of the whole for the purpose of hearing what they had to say.
There's a motion by Councilmember Bond to move into committee of the whole. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Lewis. Any discussion on the motion to move into committee of the whole? We do this via unanimous consent without objection, any objection, the motion to move into committee of the whole.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
Thirteen yays, zero nays, the motion carries. We're now in the committee of the whole. Would anyone from the administration like to speak to this paper? I see CO Burks.
Good afternoon to each of you. Lachandra Burks, Chief Operating Officer for the City of Atlanta, to Council President Shipman, as well as other members of the city council. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to stand before you today to talk about the piece of legislation that is before you. First and foremost, want to really start by saying that the mayor and this administration staunchly support diversion services, and I think it is one of those where we have invested so much that we have shown our support for it. We have, under the leadership of this mayor, we have put forward $5 million allocated for the construction of the new diversion center, $6 million to Grady Hospital as the operator of the diversion center, with another $6 million coming from Fulton County to total 12 million. We sought and received $5 million in federal appropriated spending with the assistance of our very own center to Warnock earmarked for the construction of the diversion center, including a $5.3 million Pre-Arest Diversion Services Incorporated contract with PAD totaling right at $22.3 million from this administration alone to pre-diversion services. I will say, I know that there is consideration on the floor today, and for many reasons, I would ask that if you move forward with this consideration, that you do so for one year. All the reasons why we think one year would work, we want to go back and begin some contract negotiations, and a part of those contract negotiations, the administration will include a greater accountability to include some key metrics and indicators that many of you as council members have suggested to us. And we would also like for the approximately 20 questions that were asked of PAD from the Public Safety Committee to also be answered as a part of those negotiations. And just to give you an idea of some of those 20 questions that were asked in the last Public Safety Legal Administration Committee, questions around PAD diversions by council district, discrepancies of PAD diversions by police zones, robust conversation between administration and Fulton County about the future of diversion services overall. There was an ask for a breakdown of their budget and expenses for FY '24, as well as an organizational chart. Those were kind of recap of the 20 questions that were asked by members of that committee that we have not received answers to yet. I also want to go back and just look very quickly at two of the most recent monthly reports that we have received. Specifically, in September, we had a total of 54 diversion citywide from May to July. 25 people, that's 46%, were arrested, were arrested but diverted by prosecutors post booking because they were eligible for PAD. Let's look at October of 2024 PAD reports. We had 18 diversions, 73 business engagement through outreach, 148 calls to our 311 center. Of the 148 calls to the 311 center, we had right at two people referred for housing and one person to be reconnected with their family. The majority of the services that were provided to those 148 individuals were around food and supplies on site. And what we also know, if there are more than three people at a particular site for a 311 call, that is considered an encampment, and you cannot receive services from PAD. So what we have seen, and which is why we have asked that we do some more work around this and do a little more research as we continue to partner with Fulton County around the diversion services center that we have opening this month, as well as the new Fulton County Oak Hill Behavioral Center that opened, which we are beginning to partner with Fulton County on. Again, what we have seen is a huge increase in funding, but the numbers beginning to trickle down, and that is a cause of concern for us, which is why we want to do a little more research into making sure we put some very strong metrics in place. I do have Chief Sherbaum here, who would just talk a little bit about, I've talked to you about the 311 diversions. I would like for him to talk very briefly about the APD diversions and the services that are provided to APD, and how Grady has been working very, very closely with our Atlanta Police Department, having officers over for visits to the new diversion center so that they understand what services they will receive. So basically, now if APD calls PAD, there is about a 20, average 20 to 29-minute wait for someone to get there with the new opening of the new diversion center, and officer will be able to drop off an individual, and the max time that they will spend there is five minutes, based on the process that Grady has defined. So I will let Chief Sherbaum speak briefly, and then come back and answer any questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CEO, Mr. President, members of the council. Darren Sherbaum, Chief of Police. I've had a relationship with PAD since its inception. It was actually the major of training at the time that we rolled out the program in the Police Department. And as Zone 5 commander, we were the number one zone for referrals. I believe in diversion. We cannot send our officers to these unique calls that they are called to without providing them the tools and the resources they need to navigate these type of calls that they are called to, which oftentimes are quality of life, but certainly around mental illness, economic depravity, as well as alcohol and drug dependency. During the time as Chief of Police, I continued to promote the diversion program, very, very excited about the center, because I believe the diversion center is going to address some of the key barriers that we see within the Police Department around PAD's effectiveness. When you look at the availability of PAD, it does not match the business model of the Atlanta Police Department. We are a 24 hours a day, seven-day-a-week operation, in all weather, at all times, that we're required to be of assistance to our citizens. The diversion center is going to allow us to make sure we have a resource that is there around the clock for us, that regardless of where you are in the city, you can transport an individual in need to the diversion center. If PAD is not working that day, diversion resources are still working. If the navigation team is already tied up, diversion resources are still working, so that will allow us to address what we see as one of the barriers. Secondly, under the current model that is addressed through PAD, the individual has to be able to give a voluntary consent. So if there is an impairment of drugs or alcohol, PAD, as it's currently crafted, is not a viable option for connection to services. Again, the diversion center, which has grown with concept, that was developed back to the original concept of PAD, will allow us to take individuals there and to a medical center where we're able to turn individuals over to that area to provide the medical treatment they need if it's related to being intoxicated or being impaired at that time. We also want to continue to grow the trust of our department to understand that diversion is not a silver bullet. It is a tool to be used, and we continue to make sure officers, when they see an individual that is back in the same area committing the same offenses that has been referred to PAD, that this is a process, and now we will have the ability to use the center, which is 24-hour to keep engaging that. So it will allow us to approach those facetted barriers that we've seen to, I believe, maximizes the full effectiveness of the diversion program. And certainly open for any questions that you all may have for me as well.
Thank you both. We do have a few questions. Councilmember Lewis.
And thank you, President. I have a couple of questions. I think the first one was surrounding around what CO Burks, you mentioned that you are in the last public safety meeting. We asked about 20 questions. Are you talking about this last week's public safety meeting?
The last quarterly presentation from PAD.
Got you.
Which was within the last couple of weeks.
Okay. So, thank you, that changed, erased all those questions for me.
Sure.
Thank you. The next question I have was to, are we looking to, with the new procurement, are we looking to subtract or add new services to divert, similar to Chief Sherbaum? I believe in diversion, similar to you, I believe in diversion. This council, we've been very adamant on making sure that $22 million is actually spent. I think we have the most progressive council, one of the most progressive council we've ever had, and we've been making sure that PAD is funded in ways that has never been funded. We've been pushing the mayor's office to make sure that diversion. Councilmember Keisha Waits fought for that diversion center so hard over there, so I want to make sure we include the balance of power of both of us working together to make sure we brought them up. So are you looking to subtract services or add more divertable services to the city?
And that's what we're asking, based on, you know, if you move forward, that's why we're asking for a year, because that gives us a little bit of an opportunity to look to see how well the diversion services center will operate. It will have a lot of metrics around that. We'll be able to come back and see where some of our gaps are, which will also help inform some of the additional services or different services that we feel we will need. So that is where we are with that. Again, extremely supportive of pre-arrest diversion services, and I know you have the commitment of this mayor that it is in no way our intention to take away, but to add to in as many different ways as we possibly can.
And that's where I am too, with adding and not subtracting. So thinking about some of the things that PAD, that police alternative diversion does, thinking about some things that our Police Department does, but why don't we look at adding other organizations included with these but not subtracting them? Because PAD has been so good at making sure we push the city on making sure that diversion center happened. We didn't come up with that on our own. That side didn't come up on their own, this was a partnership. And so with them being the premier partner in the country, according to some of these news articles we've been getting, and that people are copying off of what we've been doing with PAD across the country, and so I think it's time we add other partners to it instead of subtracting partners from it. And so I agree with you there. Lastly, and looking at just the growth of it, I'm happy to be a council member this past three years and to see this growth of PAD. It came with the growth of 311. And so I think, not I think, my question is, as 311 has grown as a city, because we saw more people needing to access it, we use AI a lot, because 311 is now 24 hours, but actively is only, what, from 7:00 AM until 12:00 PM with people there?
Midnight.
But with AI, it's 24 hours a day? And so are we looking at, because PAD grew with 311, from what I'm looking at, their hours expanded the moment, 311 hours expanded to 12, they did. So are we looking at it spanning 311 to 24 hours so that, because looking at PAD, it spanned the same day that 311 did? If 311, are we looking at it spanning it to 24 hours, seven days a week, so that PAD can expand with it?
So I think a couple of questions you had in there, and correct me if I'm answering you wrong. One is, I think the pre-arrest diversion center, the diversion center, will be open 24/7. So that is the place where APD officers can take five minutes max to drop off. I cannot necessarily agree that the same day 311 extended their services that the pre-arrest, that PAD extended their services. I cannot confirm that. But what I can say is, even if you just look at October with their expanded hours, 148 calls from 311, of those 148 calls, two people connected to housing, one person connected with their family, and the majority of the other services were given to them on site. Whereas with the diversion center, an officer has an opportunity 24 hours a day to drop off an individual and not provide them resources on the street and leave them there.
Thank you. I think the one thing that PAD has been trying to tell us is that their job is not to do housing, and so that's why I was asking if we can make sure all of the partners were involved in this, because if their job is to do this, and on that, just thinking about those questions that you said that the Public Safety, because I asked a lot of them, and so one of the questions I asked is mainly the police, APD Department. It was how many times have police actually called PAD? Because I wanted to see that number increase, like with the other ones, and I've been trying to watch it since I got elected, and particularly Zone 3, because the growth hasn't just happened there, just hasn't. And so I just wanted to know how many, how often are police, APD, actually using PAD? Because I think that's the best route, because we, that jail, that jail, Rice Street, that's a real thing. We don't want to take nobody there. We can't lock up our way out of this issue. And so if our police officers, the best trained, if you listen to anybody in the world who comes in here, they always say APD gets more hours training than anyone else. And so if this is a part of their training, I want to know, because I've been asking the same question for three years, has that increased? Have APD trying to divert calls, has it increased? I want to know, has that happened?
That has not. You have seen the numbers go down, and you will see that in all of the monthly reports, and I think you heard it from Chief Sherbaum himself. Some of it is officers adjusting to the hours where the services are offered versus the hours where they are needed. And so the diversion center will provide that 24-hour operations, operating the exact same hours as APD, which is 24 hours. So if there is an individual who APD encounters who needs assistance, no officer will have to remember what hours of operation we're operating on. They can take that individual to the diversion center to be serviced and can leave within five minutes, which is how it is designed to work.
And I've seen it in action, because Colorado already has it, and being a person who advocated for the Fulton County Rehabilitation Center, before I got elected, it wasn't even a thought, that that center wasn't even a thought. And so I know what we did to get that center there, I know the purpose of it, I know what it's going to do. The thing I've asked APD and PAD is to make sure they're connecting with Fulton County, because I saw disconnections with both of them on going there. And so I agree with you. My only goal is that we add more services and not operate in the manner that we're operating in with special procurements, because we typically don't do special, it's just not a, it's not normal around here. Not after we've given the contract. So I agree, you said, yes, it is, so I say, not after we've given the contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Faroki.
Thank you, Council President. First, I do want to acknowledge that this body, this administration, has been supportive of pre-arrest diversion services. I think that's a continuation and an evolution in the right direction from previous administrations and previous councils. It's, I think, a model of public safety that we all embrace and want to continue to see grow, and in some ways, this discussion is around making diversion services even better. However, I find the administration's position a bit confusing at best and revisionary and a bit gaslighting at worst, because I find that, and correct me if I'm wrong, this administration issued an RFP through its executive branch. PAD responded. Y'all awarded a contract to PAD. We introduced a paper, my name's at the top of it, but it was prepared by the executive branch for me to carry because we believed in this RFP, and somehow, over the last five or six weeks, y'all have had a change of heart where you want to move the goalpost. In a way that, to Councilmember Lewis's point, is exactly right. This is not common behavior that happens in these processes. If y'all want to cancel the award, cancel the award. But to come in here and say, oh, now we want to put some KPIs in the RFP, or we want to shorten the timeframe of it, y'all had the opportunity to do that. You issued an RFP, and so you're either telling us, either A, we want to move the goalpost, B, you have buyer's remorse for some reason, it's still not very clear, or C, you're acknowledging that you issued a poorly worded or bad RFP. And we've had four to six weeks for some direction for the administration on this issue, and I've heard different things have come across the second floor as to the direction y'all want to go, and it's changed over time. And so I guess my question to you is, what's changed since you, since the executive branch awarded this RFP?
Sure. So thank you, and I'll, if I had to choose between A, B, and C, I would ask you if it was a D for none of the above. So I will tell you, one of the things that has changed in great detail really was around some feedback from several council members around wanting to put some additional metrics in place that we probably had not thought of. I will tell you, the other thing is, when, you know, when you start on a scope of work and you go through a full RFP process, sometimes things change. And one of the things that has changed since we did that is, one, our much better relationship with Fulton County around diversion services and being able to partner with them and learn of the new things that they are doing. When we first did this, many of us didn't even know about the new Behavioral Health Center until we got an invitation to the groundbreaking. And so as we continue, and Fulton County and our conversations have thoughts and plans to do more than that and continue to partner with us around diversion services. So one of the reasons we were asking you today to even consider if you want to move this forward is for one year. It gives us an opportunity to finalize some of those partnerships with Fulton County to kind of see the direction that the county and the city collectively can go to as it relates to diversion services and take some of the input from many of the council members on this basis.
So which is articulated was, one of the options I gave, which was a poorly worded RFP, if you're now having second thoughts about what you included in the RFP.
What?
It's not a question, it's a statement.
Okay, thank you.
The second point I want to make is, you were quoted earlier as saying that one of the second givings you're having about PAD is that when they interact with someone on the street, only a certain limited number of times does someone reconnect with family or connect with housing, and that, quote, the rest of the time, they, quote, leave them there. That's their right. It's an individual's right to say, I want to stay on the street, right? We may not like it all the time, I may not like it in my neighborhood, my residents may not like it, but PAD's job is not to abduct folks from the street and move them to a different part, if they don't want to go to a different part of town, right? The same holds true for the new diversion center. Anyone can stand up and walk out of the diversion center if they see fit. And so I find it a little bit disingenuous of you to say PAD's failing because they're leaving folks on the street, when it's someone's right to say, no, I appreciate you offering me a meal, connecting with my family, whatever it may be, but I'm good. And so I just want to make that point, that the same is going to hold true of the diversion center, which we all have high hopes for. I think we're all excited about the diversion center. PAD was a champion of the diversion center and called for its establishment. It holds enormous promise for how we more thoroughly throughout a 24-hour day and holistically help folks who need assistance. But to say that it's going to result in fewer people being left on the street, we don't know that. It just kicked off. And so I think it's a little unfair to hold that up as a comparison when that's not the entire purpose of PAD. Now, I don't have any allegiance to PAD as an entity, I mean, I know many of the people over there, and if there's an alternative organization or entity that could fill the administration's desire for mobile services, then cancel the RFP, cancel the award, and reissue it. But y'all have put us in a very difficult position by kind of putting the burden on us to navigate your anxiety about an RFP that you awarded. And so my position remains the same when we come out of this committee of the whole, my motion is going to stand to award the contract as it's been awarded. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I do want to, and I know that those were your statements, but I do want to say, I never said that PAD failed, so I did want to correct. You never heard me use those terms, I don't want anyone to leave out of here thinking that I said that. But what I presented to you were actual facts around the services. They do offer navigation care services, but I presented the facts around the reporting that they have provided to us.
Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam CEO and chief, for being here to discuss this. Yeah, I'm going to echo a lot of the sentiment coming from my colleague, Councilmember Faroki. I think the most troubling piece of this to me, I, you know, even if everything, I shouldn't say even, if everything you say is true, it doesn't explain the special procurement. It doesn't explain that none of these new requirements were even included at that. And the diversion center is not a new phenomenon. We knew that it was coming, so I just, there's a lot that just doesn't add up and make sense, and it's problematic for me to then say, yeah, that's, you know, I trust them, and yeah, that's right, we need to punt this another year or two years. I, you know, I have real challenges with that. I want to talk about the statistics that you raised, because, yeah, I agree, if you take those in a snapshot, it's problematic, but I've heard from you and your team in all the conversations we've been having about the encampments in my district, that these interventions and these engagements take time. So you can't, on the one hand, ask me to tell my constituents that things take time and then criticize PAD for having, you know, the results that they have, because it, again, it's something that you and partners from home have been telling me. So there seems to be some discord and dissonance in terms of the messaging I've been getting from y'all on that as well. I also, chief, I respect you, I know you mean what you say, but the notion of the five minutes out of an officer's time to deal with this, I can guarantee you, if you pick someone up at Lindbergh under one of my bridges, it's going to take more than five minutes to get down to the diversion center. I promise you that. My people don't want APD beat officers addressing this when there is another very viable service doing this. So we, you know, in the last series of annual meetings in my district, that's what everybody's been saying, I don't want to call 911, I don't want to call 911, I want them fighting real crimes. I want a different service that is specialized in this. And so the last thing I'll say is that, you know, the diversion center, I agree with Councilmember Faroki, it just opened, and I, to me, this is a yes and proposition, it's not an either or. I believe that PAD, as much as we've, this whole process has been frustrating for all of us in terms of the engagement on all sides, I do believe PAD is mission-driven and wants to do the service. I also do believe that they are, want to, given the success and the testimony they have, they want to adapt with us, and I do believe that they will work with us over time. I don't know that we have to have metrics in a contract to be at the table with them to go, hey, can we adjust? Can we do this? We're seeing this with the diversion center's statistics. This is what APD can do in a situation where y'all can't serve during regular hours, but we know APD's going to be there during the hours you're not. And so I'm befuddled by the resistance and the shifting, and again, nothing troubles me more than that special procurement. That, to me, changed the dynamic completely for me, and it was, you know, when I learned about it after I had signaled to y'all I wanted to move this paper forward, all of a sudden, there's a special procurement. That's when things started smelling funny, and I'm not convinced that they haven't stopped smelling funny. So I, I'm ready, and I think two years, the paper is written so that it actually goes back to June 30th, we're already six months in, you ask for a year, that takes us to the end of next year, we might as well just go the full two years as was promised in the original RFP. We have plenty of time to figure this out, and so I hope that the result of this horrible process up to this point will be a And so I hope that the result of this horrible process up to this point will be a more collaborative posture from us with y'all. Yes, get us the answers to our questions. Yes, PAD, please answer and accommodate what council members concerned, as I think you understand the resistance at this point. But let's just move forward. It's getting cold. This is when I start getting really anxious about our unsheltered population. I've had three bridges go down in my district. I don't want a fourth, and I don't want it to be because we're squabbling over stupid contract stuff. So I appreciate it, and let's just go. Let's move this.
All right. If I can respond to that, Councilmember Juan, just a couple of things. You talked about Partners for Home and all the conversations we've had around relationships. Certainly agree with you on that. One way to build relationships is to constantly go back and build that relationship. If you, a one-time touch does not build a relationship. So I did want to make a comment on that. As it relates to the drive from Lindbergh, certainly agree that that takes more than five minutes, but the contract, if you move forward with it, does not include PAD bringing people to the diversion center. And so I want to make sure that there's clarity that you will not get that service if you move forward with this agreement. And then talking about a yes and on the diversion center, which is why we have asked, you know, for the one year, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood that moving forward with the approval will not stop an officer from Lindbergh to driving to the diversion center.
Councilmember Bond.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam CEO, for your presentation. Thank you, Chief Sherbahn, for your comments and for your commitment to PAD over the years. I feel like I need to say this first. I voted to support PAD every time it's come before me. But I think some people, it gets lost on people that we've done that as a body. And I'm talking about going all the way back when it was just conceptual resolutions before there was an entity that was PAD. We have voted to support diversion, you know, all of those types of programs. My concern about our existing diversion center and why I was not excited about it, because I'm like, why would we put a diversion center for services at a point, at a place, returning people essentially to the place of some people's trauma, which is the jail? Why would you bring them back to the jail, right? So imagine how terrified some people are going to be when they find themselves being driven up to ACDC. But that notwithstanding, I do support the legislation. But I also want to say something to the public and the supporters of PAD, the organization, not the principle, that, you know, when you buy a new car, right, you never not do maintenance on that car. You never not replace the tires on that car. You never not get that car tuned up. You never not try to improve your vehicle to keep it running. And I think that's kind of where we are between ourselves and Fulton County. There's an old African fable about three blind men and an elephant. And each one of those individuals has a different piece of the elephant, and it looks different. Their feelings, their sensations, their experiences with the different part of the elephant that they may be adjacent to is very, very different. And I think that's probably a fair assessment of where we are between ourselves and Fulton County in providing these services. And so I think PAD, the organization, and the way it's connected to the city, the way it engages with the city, it has to evolve, because obviously, it's not effective, right? I mean, if you're only serving three people out of 150, that's not effective. That's not working, even if it's the people's choice not to accept the choice. So we have to find a way to improve those services along with our new, I guess, diversion center. And at that meeting that you referenced, Ms. Burks, when PAD gave their last quarterly presentation, Mr. Westmoreland and Councilwoman Bakhtiar came out that they're supporting an effort in East Atlanta, which really blew my mind, because they have a regional, a micro-regional approach to dealing with those who are unhoused and challenged in that particular area of the city. But I guess what's missing from the equation, when you look at the way that PAD reacts or PAD is referred, is that they are building a relationship with the people who are unhoused who are in that area. So what I would challenge and humbly suggest that the administration do, that over the next period, as it seems that this contract will probably be awarded, you know, what was it Johnny Carson used to do with Karnak? It says, "It'll be approved," you know, where he used to imitate the psychic. And so it'll probably be approved as is, because I don't anticipate anybody doing a substitute. But over this period, there needs to be an evolution in the way the service is provided, because the pushback that has been, I guess, perceived by those who support PAD, it hasn't been that people don't support pre-arrested diversion. People are dismayed at the data that they're seeing coming out of what's going on with PAD. And we're spending money and we're held accountable for that money being spent. So if, I said all that to say, that if some combination of a future version of how pre-arrested diversion services can be partnered, melded, merged with what's working in East Atlanta very effectively, because of the relationship they're able to build in a micro-region, and, I guess, added to or attached to reacting on a daily basis to calls for immediate help, if there's some kind of regional nodes where these issues are prevalent, like perhaps in District Six, perhaps, you know, north of downtown, perhaps in West End, that imitates or, you know, kind of what's going on in East Atlanta, and some type of emergence of that, that seems to be important, you know, and that would seem to me to be more effective. When I, a long time ago, when I was in college, I worked in the corrections department for the City of Atlanta. And, you know, I worked in the days that when a convention came to town, you had mass arrests, and they called it a street sweeper. They would bring the bus in, and you didn't see any unhoused people during certain times and certain events in the city. But you also had people who were chronically within that system, and they got to know the police officers that arrested them, almost to the point where, because of that relationship, they say, Officer so-and-so, don't charge me with this, charge me with that. I want to go to Key Road for four months, not six months. I want to get off the street during the winter time. It's those types, you know, I'm attempting some levity on what is a very serious conversation, but it's the building of relationships that helps get these folks stabilized, and it has to be more than just a 3-1-1 or 9-1-1 interaction. Because if you've been on the street and you may have some issues or just simple distrust, you may not want to take advantage, you know, if you've had a negative experience or some type of negative interaction with law enforcement or the city, you know, you may not trust it. So they may not benefit from it. But obviously, what they're doing in East Atlanta is effective, because they've got a person on the ground or persons on the ground, and they're building a relationship with the people in that immediate area. So I would make that suggestion, that in the way as you look to redevelop that, that perhaps PAD evolves into something more like that. And then, secondly, you know, we operate a water sewer plant with Fulton County in the form of an authority, correct? Perhaps we need an authority on, to establish a joint authority with Fulton County around these issues, so that that could be something that they can manage it, and so that we would always be abreast of what the county is and should and ought to be doing, and likewise on this side of the equation. And that way, when we continue to jointly fund it, we know what we're paying for and we know what to expect. But, oh yeah, just, well, that's a contract. Right, we have a contract with the county on the pets, but we actually have an authority that operates a water sewer project, plant up in North Fulton with Fulton County, right?
Tomlow Water.
Yeah, underneath Watershed. So if we were to formalize it something like that in the way of ultimately, you know, it's not going to happen in two years. Well, we could create an authority in two years, but it's not, what we're doing is not going to happen overnight. But as we step to move to develop how we're going to provide this service, I mean, and people have to be honest, every person we help, they're replaced by two or three other people every single day in Atlanta. So we have to do something that's more permanent, more substantive, and expands this vision, because, you know, PAD has started out for all of its, you know, all of the fight and enthusiasm. I mean, it's an experiment, and there's nothing to say that we shouldn't be improving upon this experiment. So those are my suggestions, you know, for today.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I typically don't get to add any institutional knowledge to miss the institutional knowledge, but the City of Atlanta has done this before. We've been leading from the front on this particular issue. My esteemed colleague mentioned that what we're doing at ACDC and with the diversion center, Gateway, used to be a jail. When I talk to people from Atlanta, they, I'm from the city, so I got people who don't want to go to Gateway because that's the jail to them. And so I understand fully what he's saying, but to me, we're changing their mindset, because if they do go in, they get resources that they need. And so we're leading from the front on that, and my mindset on ACDC 10 years from now, because, God willing, I'd be around for a while, my mindset is that takes the same mindset as Gateway one day. And I, CEO Burks, I think you mentioned, I want to make sure that I heard you correct, because I know it's something I've been working, I've ran for office talking about the rehabilitation center. Did you say that you all didn't know that was happening?
No, not initially. We did not. We did not know about the, that was something that the Fulton County worked directly with the state on, which also speaks to our ability now to partner better with the Fulton County on various things, but especially around diversion services and the new partnership that we are building with them. And literally just met the other day, and they have asked that we work with them on connecting them with APD, so that that can also be a drop-off point for APD as well.
So they didn't work directly with the state on it? I've been working with Fulton County, the state, and the federal government since day one, and that means the city. We actually had to convince the community to turn the center from what it was into what it is today.
I'll say our office. You may have been, but not our office, and there was no city funding put in.
And are we sure that your entire, the administration, didn't know that we spent $20 million on Metropolitan and Cleveland Avenue, almost $20 million to build a space for 5,000 people? I just want to make sure.
For 5,000?
Yeah, it was serviced 5,000 people per day. 100 people from Grady Memorial Hospital would be there every single day. And so it was a longer transition.
We didn't put any funding into it.
Okay.
All of that went through Fulton County.
So it didn't, it went through three different branches of government, and we actually wrote letters of recommendation to receive the funding. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. The, so Gateway used to be a jail, so we've done it before, and the mayor's office did not know the Fulton County Rehabilitation Center was coming.
Not when it first started, no. At some point along the way we did, but not when it first started. No, we did not.
Okay.
And we were glad to be a part of the opening and glad to now be able to partner with them.
So they've been partnering with the city, but I guess that's why I've been asking in the public safety meetings, why isn't PAD or why isn't APD connected with that service? But we, if there's any kind of way that we can work better with Fulton County, which is why today, I actually have, I actually, I'm so nervous about what's going on, to not know about that and to give them our jail, right? So Sheriff Labatt has our jail, has, he.
You're talking about ACDC.
Yes.
No, I'm talking about the new one in your district.
I know, I'm just putting it together in one sentence. I said to not know this is going on, to not know they're doing that, and we just gave.
No, no, no.
Thank you, thank you, President.
I think you have it confused, Councilmember. Of course, we knew and worked very closely with Fulton County on the ACDC piece, which is what I talked about in my opening remarks, around the $5 million for the renovation, the $5 million from Senator Warnock's office, and partnering with Fulton County on the day-to-day operations, $6 million a year from each organization. I was referring to the new Oak Hills Center for Behavioral and Mental Health, which is a Fulton County and State of Georgia partnership that we are now beginning to be a part of as we work through with Fulton County, our partnership around diversion services. But we did not put $20 million into the Behavioral Health Center. We put over $20 million into ACDC for the Center for Diversion Services, two very different institutions and facilities.
And I'll make sure I give you all of the information with the city and with anyone from the administration that's on any email with me about this rehabilitation center. I'll make sure I provide that to you.
Would appreciate it.
So Fulton County Rehabilitation Center, to give you a little bit more information on it, is not a county and state project. The federal government looked at Fulton County, looked at, the federal government looked at the State of Georgia and said, we need five rehabilitation centers in the state. They're about to be sued. The Fulton County has to do three. This is the first of three. So there'll be at least two more in Fulton County. So I just want to make sure we're together on that. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bond.
Just a quick follow-up on why an authority would be a good idea. You know, the Atlanta Housing Authority, when it was established in the 1930s, was supposed to be our arm to build affordable and public housing. They're now prevented by federal regulations. They can't build homeless shelters, transitional housing, temporary housing. If we were to do an authority with Fulton County, we could develop affordable or transitional or temporary housing for this population. That's one more of the benefits that could happen with that, just a suggestion. But yeah, I used to work in that, that's the jail I used to work in, Mr. Lewis, was what is now the Gateway Center. It was built to hold 400 individuals. We had an average daily population of 1,600. And that's why ACDC was built to the size that it was built, so they would accommodate that population. I used to work the floors there, 11 to 7 sometimes. We, I worked on the shortest shift, and sometimes I'd be on the floor with 400 inmates by myself. You know, so it is, well, you brought back some, brought back a flashback to me. But anyway, but anyway, so, you know, those are ideas, I think, that, you know, going forward, that this thing needs to evolve, because obviously, what we're doing now is good, but it has to be better.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Farokey.
I move to exit committee of the whole.
There's a motion by Councilmember Farokey, seconded by, who made the second? Who made the second? Councilmember Bond, to move out of committee of the whole, that is not debatable, move to vote. Madam Clerk, well, let me ask, is there any objection to moving out? We can do this via unanimous consent. Is there any objection to moving out of committee of the whole? Madam Clerk, please sound the count on unanimous consent.
13 yeas, 0 nays.
13 yeas, 0 nays. I want to thank folks in the administration for coming. So we are now back into our regular session. We have a motion on the table to adopt by Councilmember Farokey. We are discussing the motion to adopt 24-0-1474, Councilmember Farokey.
So I'd like to move to amend the paper to change the start date to January 1, 2025, because we've already funded PAD through the end of December. So this would not change the end date. It would essentially go from a two-year contract to a de facto 18-month contract, because we're already almost six months into the new contract. So it would start January 1 and end as it currently stated in the agreement.
There's a motion to amend by Councilmember Farokey, seconded by Councilmember Juan. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? Councilmember Overstreet.
I think the amendment will also have to include funding strings. I don't think the paper is ready. Is that, is it there?
The CFO. I think we've been told by finance that that's not the case.
It's not? Because I don't see it there.
Yeah, there's not a funding string identified in the paper as it stands, but the paper does authorize the CFO to enact a funding string after it's passed. So it gives that authority.
That's fine.
Can I answer the question?
Yeah, that's fine. I just didn't see it there.
Okay.
Since we're amending, I was just going to try to, you know, button it up, that's all.
Other discussion on the motion to amend. Hearing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to amend.
Council President, for the record, if we can just clarify what the amendment is, because we will have to.
The amendment is to change the beginning date to January 1, 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please open the vote on the motion to amend.
The vote is open. The vote's closed, 12 yeas, 1 nay.
12 yeas, 1 nay, the motion to amend carries. We're now back to the motion to adopt as amended. Discussion on the motion to adopt as amended, Counselor Faroki.
I was going to move to adopt it. If that motion's still on the table, it stands.
Discussion on the motion to adopt as amended, Counselor Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to just make a brief remark. I completely support this legislation. I appreciate Counselor Faroki's leadership in moving this forward. Uh, one comment I did want to make, I know in the discussion with the COO, there was a request to potentially reduce the amount of time for this particular extension to just a year. And I guess in that context, this would have been a six-month extension rather than an 18-month extension. Um, and something that I think about a lot before I joined this body, I spent over a decade working at a national nonprofit, helping veterans find jobs when they transition from the military, overseeing program operations, and also overseeing metrics and data and all the things we need to do to report to funders and to report to our grantors. And, you know, funders, when they give you a grant, they give you some operational metrics that you have to report on at the end of the grant period. Uh, in the case of the organization I was working with, the number of people we helped, the number of events that we conducted, the number of placements that we had. But as we got better at what we did, we were able to innovate and identify things and, and ways in which we were helping people that weren't necessarily explicitly in our grant agreements. The time it takes us to find someone a job, the salary attainment that someone has, the salary goals that they have when they come to our organization, then what percentage meet the, or exceed that goal, the retention rate three years from now, six years from now, are you still working at that same company? And we were able to innovate largely despite the fact that, you know, we weren't being asked to, to build in these metrics or these KPIs. But we were also able to innovate because of a core cadre of employees that stayed with the company for years because of the commitment to the mission, the commitment to our company culture, and commitment to an organization that they knew was going to be around because we had funding that lasted four years. And so when I think about this conversation that we have on a regular basis with regards to PAD this year, I can't think of how many different pieces of legislation we've had to approve to have stopgap funding for PAD. And I think about what that means for employee morale, what that means for employee retention. And the people who are out in the field doing this work, getting better at what they do, being more efficient because they understand what they do more intimately than ever before, what does that mean for them when they don't know they're going to have a paycheck three months from now, six months from now, or even a year from now? And so I just wanted to say for the record that for me, I think it's important that we have a longer continuance for these sorts of agreements so that we can hire the best possible people out there. And we can ensure that they stay with the organization long enough to build the confidence in their work and to build institutional knowledge to deliver on all the things we're asking them to deliver on,